All right, if I could have your, your attention, want to call the November 6th work session, White County Board of Education to order. Appreciate everyone being here, staff and as well as board members, members of the public. Appreciate you, your interest in the business of, of the school district and we're going to use this time to go through items on our consent agenda, get some reports from, from the various committees that will be responsible for, for various aspects of the, of the, of the board. And so we'll go through those items and address any questions. Maybe a couple of items on the, on the agenda that we can speak to in session as we prepare for our six o'clock meeting. So we'll start going through the consent items. That's the approval of the board meeting minutes, as well as the meeting minutes from the work session from October 9th. Any corrections, additions, deletions that need to be made to any of those, those meeting minutes? Okay, well, we'll thank Ms. Sims for doing an excellent job and getting everything reported. So appreciate that, that work, Ms. Sims. We'll move on next to our policy report. We don't have any policies that we have, that have been brought to our attention that need to be addressed unless any board member has anything that we need to, need to consider. Okay, if not, we'll move on to maintenance report. Understanding no report other than just general maintenance that's taking place. Mr. Alley, did you get that boiler turned on or heater turned on this morning? Okay, that's great. I was, all right, that's great because I know that can, that can, that can get everybody's attention real quick on a, on a, on a Thursday morning. Anything else to, that report bring their attention? Okay, well, great and tell your staff, we appreciate all that they do to keep the, the equipment for creature comfort up and running. All right, any other questions for Mr. Alley regarding maintenance?
I have to ask, how's things going at Doyle?
Yes, I've got a, I mean, a simple blurb in my district, in my director's update, but they put the metal roofing on the, the decking, yeah, thank you, the metal decking is on, so it's somewhat dried in at this point, all the blockwork is done, they expect to start the exterior brick facade on, on next week.
All right, great, thank you. Next we'll go to budget report, Ms. Officer.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Markham, for our report. This is October, so just as in prior years, the fund balance projections are lower because we're still very early into our fiscal year. The general purpose school fund revenues through October is about 28% of the annual budget and showed an increase of 3.49% over the same period last year. But expenditures and encumbrances totaled 31% of the budget and reflected an increase over October of last year. The increase is due primarily to higher salary and benefit costs, instructional staff, increases in supplies and materials, just everything's costing more money. The TISA revenues again is a little slightly lower than it was last year. Collections are coming in at moderate growth. Overall, our school system remains in sound financial condition. Through the first four months of this fiscal year, revenues are tracking as expected. Expenditure levels are consistent with normal operating patterns at this point in the year.
All right, thank you, Ms. Officer. Any questions, comments, board members for the regarding our budget report? Okay, if not, we'll go into the next item and that's a budget, budget amendments and transfers. Just three items in our packet this evening for us to consider. One of them, those is new monies that came in thanks to our funding we received for our health, health services grant. So budget amendment reflects the income of that money coming into us. And then we also had two other items that were more coding in nature, not new monies, but monies getting, getting properly accounted for in our, in our system. One of them that were was a mis, a misposting of some money that came in that was to a federal fund but should have gone into a, the general purpose fund. So that's correction on that, but Mr. Steve, if you want to just touch on those.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, just transferred to of indirect cost out of sub fund 432, this is fund 142. So just transferring, it was a coding error, so it's being moved to the correct expenditure line item or coding, excuse me, the expect, correct line item in the budget. And then that was amount was to $2,935.34. And then there was another amount in the amount of $15,000 that we received in a pre-K early literacy funding and that was coded mistakenly in 141 and that was actually supposed to be deposited into federal, a federal account. And so to make, they're, they're moving that around and then federal will now reimburse 141 in the amount of $15,000 over the course of those expenditures. I say that correct, Mr. Markham? Thank you.
I do have one question, are these, do these have to go in front of the county commission to be approved, once they're approved here? So, so all new money has to go in front of the county commission to be approved? Okay, thank you.
Good questions and thank you for the clarifications. Any, any other questions, comments for our budget amendments? Okay, if not, we'll move on to personnel report. Personnel report was provided to you in your packet. Had, it's like had a couple, a couple of hires come through for the month of October. New hires, but you also seen the personnel report, the new hires, terminations and transfers. Actually, Ms. Riggsby, I think I stated that wrong. I looked on the worksheet and it looks like it says new hires for October 3, but when we actually go to the report, we had a few more new hires, is that correct or does that include? Okay, all right. So there's a little delay in, in what one report. So if you really wanted to know what, if you really want to know what the, the official report would be, you'd look at the monthly personnel changes for the, the correct amount. Okay, so thank you for that clarification, that helps get information going forward. Questions, comments on our personnel changes? Okay, then the next item is threat assessment report and it's great to see that we have no threat assessments to report for this month. Everything else has been closed out, so that's thankful for that. So then we'll move into the next item. And that's approval of, of school clubs. Appreciate Ms. Dean, staff, administrators, looking at this. Doing a, I think this was stimulated from a request for a new club to be approved and going through that process. Realized that it's something that had not been reviewed in, in a period of time. And so basically what we're doing is we're going in and the information that was provided to you was for all the student clubs and this is primarily at the high school level, correct? High school and middle. And so these, these are, are clubs that have submitted application, all the paperwork in, so we can get those officially approved, so where we're cleaning that part of our, our, our responsibility to, to approving these student clubs, bring that all up to date. So thankful, thankful for all the advisors and administrators took the time to do that. It is very helpful and that will have, have a record, a clean record with approvals for those various clubs. So comments or questions on, on that?
Grading reading, if you, if you read all that, I mean, 119 pages of clubs, wow.
Well, and I will say that there's been, because of the way they're doing clubs differently at the high school and during the school day and there've been some new clubs that have started, we have a lot of new personnel, different interests and hobbies, and so we wanted to make those well-rounded and versatile, so give students choices. But that came with a lot of new clubs and so I felt like it was time for us to really make sure we have a good audit of what clubs are out there, make sure we have all the paperwork in place as it should be. We did something similar in, in recent history with our SSOs at each school. Make sure that, so just kind of pursuing excellence in that regard, so nothing new, nothing controversial. Just want to make sure that we're doing everything the, the way the policy dictates and so we're getting everything on record.
Quick question.
Yes, Mr. Smith.
For the clubs, there's a question in there about, let me find it again, I'm sorry. Under section D budget, does your club require any funds and then what's the club revenue generated? Are any of those funds within the school system for any of the clubs or are they housed outside?
No, any funds that come to the school would, would go through the internal schools audit. So if there's any club funding, that would be handled through the school. So there wouldn't be any outside, there shouldn't be any outside funding that's going on privately through any Venmos or anything like that, should all flow through the school and be, it would be handled in the internal schools audit.
So found it interesting that some of the things that you just kind of take for granted and, and think about Beta Clubs, FFA, Student Council and, and those are clubs I think we probably all grew up with. And they were taking place and then start adding, adding several more along. along that line. But it's, it's good to see that we're getting those documented, for one, and it's also good to see the, the depth of which opportunities are being made available to students. And also appreciate the advisor sponsors on those too, because they don't get paid extra to do that.
They do not. I appreciate you saying that. That's what I pointed, wanted to make. Want to say thank you to our faculty and staff that help make those, sponsor those clubs and make those opportunities possible for our students.
From a professional level, I'm glad to see we have Skills USA Club in our district. All right, any other questions on the, the school clubs? So just, or members if they're, just a reminder, all these items that we're covering right now will be considered consented agenda items. If there is one that you needed that they think we need to pull out for further discussion, allow that to new business. But otherwise, this would be approved under our consent, approving these clubs. So questions on that? Everybody clear? Okay, thank you. Then we'll move on to the next item under our consent item, our consent agenda, and that's have a couple of, we have a field trip request and a fundraising request. And the, start with the...
I believe they're both fundraising. I believe that's, that's mistake, a mistake. But it, they should be both fundraising requests.
All right, so these are fundraising requests, not field trip requests. So Hot County Track Team has requested a fundraising request for them for...
If I may, Mr. Chairman, Cross Country, Cross Country is, they're, they're asking for a, okay, so Cross Track, let me start with that, that's the first one in your file. The Track fundraiser is taking the place of Cross Country. Cross Country was doing a joint dinner, a barbecue dinner with tennis and wrestling. So Cross Country is stepping out of that fundraiser, and, and Track is going to step into that fundraiser. So it's one that was already existing, so doesn't, no additional fundraiser, just going to move into that. Then Cross Country, Cross Country is asking to do calendar boards. They've had a change in coaching. So Andrew Garrett, who's a PE teacher at our high school, has taken that over. He would like to do a fundraiser calendar boards, which we've done, different groups have done in the past. Every student tries to fill up that amount, like the 30th, you'd give $30, the 25th, you'd give $25, and along those lines, from friends and family to raise money for their uniforms and supplies that they need for their season. And then also, they have a proposed fundraiser of a 5K race, and this would be in May, or April or May of the spring. So I'd have to go back and see which fundraisers they were proposed to do before. I know they had some on the docket already, but these would be the ones that they're asking to do under this new leadership.
Thank you for that, that clarity and that correction. So, so Track is going to join up with tennis on an already approved fundraiser. So it's not a new item that we're going to be approving, it's just going to be allowed those two programs to participate together in that, that activity. And then the Cross Country fundraiser approval is basically, is going to be a substitution for items that they've already, that have already requested. So these would become their official fundraisers for the year.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, any questions on any of those two fundraisers? Okay, if not, that concludes the, all the items for our, under our consent agenda. So just want to touch basically on a couple other items on our agenda for tonight. We've got a little time, and give us a chance if we need to ask any questions, or, or maybe provide, provide some, some information. Item number eight on our agenda is, is discussion of school day pay for staff. So that basically is saying when we, when we look at the cost for those, for those, you know, for all the support staff for, that are non-licensed for days that miss snow, we can see the, what it costs on a per day basis for those when we, when we approve that, if we were to approve, paying them for, for time, time missed because, due to snow. And it's very lengthy, so I appreciate everyone that took the time to, to put those reports out, to give us clarity on just, you know, it's, our, our cost per day is, is a very respectable number, just given the fact that we, we do employ a lot of, a lot of people at various different levels. Is there anything that, any, anybody have any questions on the report that was, that was submitted? Does that, no, we asked for, for that. Is that the information that you, that was, that was needed for our discussion tonight? Do we think we have the information we needed?
Yes, one question I have is, we, they're, they're already, all of our support staff is working an extra 15 minutes a day, correct?
Yes, that's, I mean, that's correct. Well, the educational assistance, we added 15 minutes a day in order to cover arrival and dismissal duties.
So...
And they're getting paid for that currently.
Okay, so that, in the end, at the end of the year, we have technically 13 snow days, right?
Correct.
Okay, so help me understand, that's making up, is it six, six days? 15 minutes a day now, or throughout the year? Does that get them six days pay now that if we missed six days, they've already been paid for those?
Yes, yes. I think it's about 6.2, I think is, is the correct number, but yeah, that, that is correct.
Okay, so what's really in question would be the 6.2 up to 13?
Correct.
Okay, so that number, do you have that number right? I mean, I guess I could do it.
I mean, 6.8 more days than possibly they could...
At this number, the total per day cost for all support staff, right? Or is this number...
This is showing, that's, that's just showing how much that we save by those folks not getting paid on the snow days per day.
Okay.
And in your packet, just right after that, is the school nutrition, and it's important to note that as well, because school nutrition is a separate budget, as you know. That costs them about $7,200 a day that they would pay out per, on average, per cost of labor per day. So for every snow day, those people don't work, that's what they save. But also compounding that issue is the fact they're also not generating revenue that day. And you see that, based on averages, that they, they make somewhere around $17,000 per day in food sales, in lunch, you know, in, in food sales. So it's, it's really compounded the problem in school nutrition, because not only are they having to pay out, but they're also not generating funds. So I just want to make that notation.
So it's like a, it's like a net loss of $24,000.
Correct.
Per day.
So, again, just to clarify, and you're correct in saying that, Mr. McDonald, everybody's getting paid for the hours that they're working right now. What we did was just clean up an accounting process where we were paying people at the end, and for work that they'd already done, which is really not correct practice. So if the board doesn't do anything right now, everybody's getting paid currently for the hours that they are working currently. What, what it just needs to be understood is that if we miss 10 days of snow, if we miss all 13, those are going to be deducted, deducted at the end of the school year, because these, these employees, most of them, 99% of them, spread their checks out over 24 pay periods. So, and when they get to that 24th pay period, they may not get a check, depending on how many snow days we use. So there's nothing the board needs to do. I just want them to understand that if the board wants to do anything different with the process that we've taken, and I want you to have the numbers to make an educated decision.
All right, thank you. Is there any other discussion on that?
I will say one other thing. There, there are options, and the board doesn't have to take any action. The board could choose to do something later down the road. You know, we've often talked about bonuses and things along those lines, but I don't think that this is the time of year to talk about bonuses, in my opinion, be the end of the year, when you look at what your excess, your overages would be. So that could be a decision about this that the board would want to make later down the road. But just know, everybody's being paid right now for the minutes they're working, they're being paid appropriately. But if there's any consideration, this could be something that the board would want to entertain in the spring.
Any other questions on that item on our agenda? Okay. Going down the, the list, it's Mr. Trump mentioned about the travel request for, for the boys soccer team, that item in new business. Old business is an item that just is on the agenda because Fire Hall property regarding Bondi Croft, put that on there. Representative Cheryl indicated that he was going to come tonight, wanted to speak to us on, on that item. So that's the reason why that's, that's there. I think Ms. Douglas may, may have, have some information, she may not. Ms. Douglas, I haven't spoken to you about that. I do have a little information to follow up on that to, when that comes up on our agenda, but just wanted to let you know. And I think Executive Robinson also plans to be here, be available if we have any questions when we get to that point in the discussion. So just wanted to make you aware of that. Other than that, just for clarity, for, as we head into next week, for the TSBA conference, that we'll be picking up on our objective, our strategic plan for, that we've been working on over the past several months, we'll be having our meeting on that at the TSB conference at 8:17-ish, when Mr. McDonald, at 8:15, when Mr. McDonald will join us when he gets finished, but we'll...
So you can start without me. I will get caught up.
Well, I'm not sure, because I mean, you're, you're the president over that, over that organization. So we don't want to, we want to make sure we, we respect your time and have you there. But we'll be meeting there on, on Saturday morning at, at 8:15. We'll work to try to wrap that up, and then, but that will be, the, the objective will be that we'll wrap some of the planning portion phase that we're, we're working, we've been working on, and then have something to, to present and share to the public on, at our December board meeting. Okay, so that's where we're, what we want to be working towards. Any other questions, comments, time that we've got during this work session?
Yeah, I do have. I, I had a coach call me. I don't know if this is the right time to do this or not, and this may be a question for Chad. The bonuses that we, when we paid out our bonuses the last month, coaching supplements, those were included in that and, and put several people in a higher tax bracket. So was just wondering if there's a uniform way that maybe those coaching supplements can be paid in a off cycle, than just the regular check at the end of the, you know, at the end of the month? Because the ones that I've talked to, it costs upwards of $600 or $700 in taxes because they went into a different tax bracket, because of their bonus, everything that was added to that.
Thank, thank you, Mr. McDonald. That's a question that we get quite often, and one that we've addressed several times, and I'm happy to address it again. The IRS has stipulations on how bonuses or supplemental pay is paid out. And they give you two options in doing so. You can pay it on a separate check and withhold at like a 22% income tax rate, or you can combine it with a normal payroll check and withhold at their normal rate, which in most cases is more beneficial to the employee on the, as far as their net pay. One thing I do want to point out is that at the end of the year, all that gets figured into how they file their taxes. So if more is taken out on that pay, on that paycheck, that just means that they're going to get that money back. That money's not gone. So that's, and I know they may be expecting it right then. As far as when we pay those out, we've made adjustments in those, whenever those get, those supplements get sent over, and it may have been, you know, this was an odd time as far as, as the bonus, that additional bonus getting paid this time. And we have made adjustments to where we try to, try to not put everything all together on one check like we used to do. But that, that, that's, those are our two options. We go with the option of paying on a normal payroll check, because that's usually the most beneficial to the employee. And I know that there's some other districts likely that don't do it that way, but that's the way that the IRS rules read, and so that's, that's the way that we do it.
So I, I guess the next question I would have is, are those supplements paid, they're not paid at the beginning of the season, they're paid at the end of the season, correct, of whatever sport it is?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, that way, in case you have somebody that gets halfway through the season, decides, hey, I want to walk away, they've already got their pay, and there's really no way of getting it back?
That's correct, yeah. And that's a change that we did a couple of years ago, and it, and it was, it was a painful process. We, we heard from several people, because we would pay, we used to pay everything on separate checks, 21st Century, I know Farrah could, could, could tell you good, good stories about that, but...
Well, I'll, I'll pass along that information. I'm not sure that it's going to make, you know, everybody feel the warm and fuzzy, but, I mean, it is what it is. I, I appreciate your explanation.
Yeah, sure. And, and employees are always eligible to change their withholding. They can change their withholding every month if they want to do so. We, you know, it's not necessarily preferred, but they have that, they have that option. So if they know that they're going to get a big bonus, and they want to change their W4 withholding, they're more than happy to turn one of those in and then send us in another one once the payment's made.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald and Mr. Markham for finding that clarity. So that's good. So that's, if, if nothing else, then we've covered our items for the consent agenda, giving you a little update for other items on that, that are on the agenda, just to make you aware of. And if that's, if nothing else, then we'll adjourn until 6 o'clock for a regular meeting, okay? Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we'll start our board meeting in two minutes. Two-minute warning.
All right, at this time I'd like to call the November 6th meeting of the White County Board of Education to order. If you would, please stand with me and Mr. John Smith will be leading us in a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and I'd like to thank everyone for being here tonight. We have several members from our community. Some of those that I expect will be recognizing here a little bit later this evening for our school spotlight, other members of the community, and our staff and board members. So, thank you all for being here and those joining us online for your interest in the business of the White County school system. Before we consider approving tonight's agenda, just please note the following. Tennessee Code to Annotate and Board Policy 1400 state that every meeting in the board is open to the public except where law allows for a closed session. The agenda for the board meetings are posted on the district's website at www.wycoastschools.net. Agendas are posted at least three days prior to each meeting. Public Acts of 2023 and Chapter Number 300 in Board Policy 1404 requires for each meeting's agenda to include an item reserved for public comment as well as the conditions under which those wishing to comment will be recognized. A sign-up sheet is made available prior to the beginning of each regular meeting, and individuals who have signed up prior to the start of the meeting to speak will be recognized in the order listed on the sign-up sheet at the point in the agenda designated for public comment. Board meetings are streamed with the help of our central office technology staff for live or recorded viewing, and links are provided on the district's website. Attending or speaking during tonight's meeting implies consent for comments and appearances to be used. Before we consider tonight's agenda, does anyone on the board have a conflict of interest that they need to disclose? If so, please do so at this time.
Mr. Chair, no conflict tonight on the agenda, just being transparent. My wife is a teacher in the school system, but all the opinions and the things that you hear me say tonight are for the betterment of the students and the school district as a whole.
Mr. McDonald.
Mr. Chairman, my husband is employed by the school district, but the opinions are mine and mine alone tonight. I have no conflicts.
Thank you, Ms. Officer.
Mr. Chair, my wife works at the high school. There are no conflicts on the agenda, but my comments are mine and mine alone.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smith. So, Ms. Sims, please let the meeting notes reflect that Mr. McDonald, Ms. Officer, and Mr. Smith all indicated they have spouses that work for the district, but nothing on the agenda being considered tonight would pose a conflict of interest for them. So, with that being said, board members, we have had an opportunity to review the agenda for tonight's meeting, and as we go through that, there is just one item that's been added to the new business, and that's the travel request for the White County High School Boys Soccer Team. So, that's the only new business item that's been added to the agenda. So, at this time I'd entertain a motion for approval of the agenda meeting for this meeting. Motion by Mr. McDonald, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. The items in our consent agenda were reviewed during our work session at 5:00. Those included the approval of the board meeting minutes and work session minutes from October 9th, our policy report, but there were no policies that the board needed to consider. We had our maintenance report, our budget report, and budget amendments and transfers along with personnel threat assessment, approval of school clubs, and approval of field trip fundraising requests for the White County High School Track Team and the White County High School Cross Country Team. Board members, as you know, that any of the items in the consent agenda, you have the opportunity to pull those out of consent, and those will be added to new business if that is requested. But otherwise, those consent agenda items would be considered to approve with no objection. So, do I hear anybody want to remove any of the items in our consent agenda? Okay, if not, if there's no objection, then the consent agenda will be adopted by unanimous vote as presented. So, that leads us to the next item on our agenda, and that is school spotlight. We're pleased to have representatives from the Bondicraw Elementary School. We have Ms. Marty Hedgecough and Ms. Catherine Willie. They will be, Wiley, I'm sorry, did I? I'm sorry, Wiley, I read that wrong. Sorry about that, Ms. Wiley. So, they're going to be coming and making some presentations. Our theme for this year is Artist of the Year Awards, and we'll be recognizing students from Bondicraw. So, ladies.
Is this on? Okay, hello. All right, the first person that we would like to recognize is Killian Cersey. Killian is a wonderful artist. You can always find her with a pencil and notepad in her hand, and she even has one tonight. Her drawings are unique and representative of who she is as a person. She is amazing, and we love having her in class.
All right, the next person that we would like to honor tonight is Ella Edmonds. Ella is a very expressive illustrator when drawing characters and main events in her stories. She incorporates great dialogue and action into her drawings. Her characters are dynamic, and Ella's sense of humor shines through her artwork.
Next, we have Rowan Armstrong Delight. Rowan is a fantastic artist. He uses his artistic creativity to help him solve problems and write wonderfully. His artwork is encouraging to everyone who sees it. We are so proud of Rowan. We hope that he remembers the little people when he is working for Disney one day.
All right, next, if I could have Emma Slatton come up. Emma is an excellent artist. She loves to draw and create things in her spare time. She takes her time to really think about what design and is very creative. She is good at drawing people and characters and making them come alive. She often depicts a story through her drawings with dialogue and speech bubbles.
And lastly, we would like to recognize Lewis Carrick. Officer Carrick is very talented. He's an amazing artist. In addition to monitoring our building and keeping us safe, he finds time to draw personalized pictures for our students. The children request a picture, and they get so excited when they receive one of Officer Carrick's drawings with their name taped outside of the classroom. Officer Carrick is such a blessing to our school. He has a gift for building relationships. Through his drawings, he makes individual connections by making each student feel special.
Before we go anywhere, let's take a recess. I'd like to get a picture of our award recipients so we can have that for promotion. So, teachers, if you would, and reward recipients, we're going to take just a moment. Come up here and we'll get some pictures snapped, okay? And parents, feel free to come up and get a picture, a group picture as well. So, we'll recess while we can take care of that, okay? I'd like to thank everybody from Bondicraw, students and parents for coming and letting us recognize your students tonight and their gifts and the arts, and for Ms. Hedgecough and Ms. Wiley for coming and making those presentations. You're more than welcome to stay with us for the duration of the meeting, but if you do need to excuse yourselves, we understand, and we will resume the meeting here in just one moment. All right, so I'll call our meeting back to order. Next item on our agenda is a discussion on snow day pay for staff. Been requested that we just get some information on this. Mr. Strombarger has provided that for us, just to understand the impact and how we're handling snow days for those hourly employees that sometimes gets more impacted by snow days than the others. So, Mr. Strombarger, if you could, just, excuse me, brief us on the information that was provided.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, it's a conversation that comes up annually as we get into the snow season. We have employees that have to work on snow days, and we have some employees that do not get to work on snow days. And so, there's always, you know, heartstrings for those that just don't get to work and miss out on money because it snows. It's not their fault. But also, the reality is that it costs a lot of money to pay people, and we can't pay people for not working when we have other people that have to come in, like our maintenance folks and our custodians. And so, it's an annual dilemma. The board in the past has had a practice where we would get past the snow season. The board would allow those workers to make up some time, up to like five days of snow time, and they could recoup some of that. What was happening is they were really comping time. They were banking time. They were working right now, and then counting that towards that make-up time and hoping that the board would give them that opportunity to make up some time later in the year. What we've done at this point was just to have a more sound financial practice. We're paying everybody right now for the time that they're working. So, a lot of our aides, our educational assistants are working each day. They're staying after school and helping with dismissal, and so, we're paying them for that time right now. So, what is happening right now is sound financial practice, or I guess accounting practice. Everybody's getting paid for the work that they're doing, but just know that if we miss, say, 10 days of snow, all 10 of those days will come off of their paychecks at the end of the year. So, it could mean a whole paycheck that people wouldn't see. So, there's no action that needs to be taken by the board right now. I just wanted to clarify where we are. There's really no need to make up, give any make-up time because those folks are being paid for that time that they were doing in the past. They were banking. They're being paid for that right now. But there is the reality that they could miss all that snow time at the end of the year, and it could be significant for some of our employees. And the board had asked for the numbers, the financial numbers, to show. We've provided that to show what it costs per day for those people that what we're not paying out on those snow days. And also, I've given you information to show what we are saving in school nutrition, actually what it costs per day for labor and school nutrition because it's a separate budget, and then also the revenue that will be missed by school nutrition every time we have a snow day and we don't have school. So, again, no action that needs to happen tonight. Certainly, the board's prerogative that they want to do something different. It may be something that you want to entertain in the spring. Once we've got past the snow season and we have some of a projection of what we might be putting back into the budget or back into fund balance at that point, that might be a more proper time to discuss what could be done to help those employees. But anyway, I was asked to provide those numbers, and so, I did, and I hope that explains kind of where we are at this point with our snow day practice with these employees.
Thank you, Mr. Strombarger. Board members, do you have any questions or comments to satisfy, provide you the information you need as we understand this subject and how we're handling this, how the approach we're taking to this year?
Mr. Chairman, I do have just one comment. Thank you for that explanation and our discussion and our work session. That really clarified a few things to me. But I do want us to make sure we've got this on our radar to maybe focus in on in the spring of the year, see where we're at. Let's go back and look and take care of those folks that are essentially really part of the backbone of our schools to try to take care of those folks. So, yeah, let's just maybe put this on the agenda for sometime later in the year as far as, you know, maybe before budget time. That way, we can go back and revisit this.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. So, I'm going to assign you the task of sending in an agenda meeting item request for March. Thank you, Mr. McDonald, and you would. All right, any other questions, comments regarding our... Thank you, Mr. McDonald, and you would. All right, any other questions, comments regarding our snow day pay for staff? Again, thank you, Mr. Drumberger, for putting that information together for us. Next item on our agenda is our student representative report. Unfortunately, tonight, our student representatives are not able to, to join us, so we'll have to move on to the next item on our agenda in which that's a district update by Mr. Drumberger.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Personnel reports are in your folders. We've had a few changes recent days, but I'm glad to say that we have all of our classes covered, all of our bus routes are covered, and that's significant. I've talked to several directors here in the past few days that there's a text thread going on. Almost everybody is doubling up routes and having to pay teachers to run routes and we're fortunate to have fully staffed classrooms and buses and we're proud of that. On a health note, our health and safety teams have worked with the local judge to develop a new tiered structure for dealing with the issue of vaping products in our schools. That seems to be going very well. It, like I said, there's various tiers. It's, it's probably one of the biggest problems we have in our schools, but that's a blessing because we could have things a lot worse. So, anyway, that program is going well and it deals with a lot of, a lot of education on the front end and it involves the parents and the families. So, we're, we're proud of that, the way that program is getting started. On a safety front, we continue to meet school, with school and district leaders to address safety concerns. Additionally, the sheriff's department has secured more grant funding and will be hiring a new SRO to serve our school district, an additional on top of the eight that we have in place already. Financially, you heard earlier in our financial report, the district is in sound financial position. Athletically, the White County High School football team is in the state playoffs again this year and is playing, as we speak, in Hickson. I think the score is six to zero. Go Warriors. High school basketball tips off in a few weeks and at its tournament time in elementary basketball. So, exciting times in the worlds of athletics. Building projects, the steel roof decking has been installed at Doyle Elementary School in the addition. The exterior brick facade will begin next week. Mr. Alley and I have been meeting with some different firms that provide facilities audits. We'll compile that information in the event that school board might like to entertain some presentations about long-term capital improvements. Academically, White County Schools recently received more good news regarding school growth scores. This information is currently embargoed, but we are really excited to celebrate this information with you in the near future. You will be very proud. And lastly, I'm looking forward to the Tennessee School Board Association Conference and Convention next week in Nashville. Looking forward to spending some time down there with you and learning alongside you. And at this time, this completes the director's report. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Drumberger. Board members, have any questions, comments for our director on their school report? Or, excuse me, our director's report? Good. I would like to swing back to the comment you made about facility audits and appreciate Mr. Alley and Mr. Drumberger working and thinking along that, that line of what's next. We're very fortunate that we have been able to address some of our capital plan, that we're on our, our capital improvement plan that stretched out a five-year period and if I'm not mistaken, and we've had a lot of those major items have been addressed. And so, now it's, how do you, how do you plan for things that aren't broke? Well, you really need to go in and do an audit of the system and that's what they came and, and did a presentation or shared some information with, with us two board meetings ago. And after some, some further considerations, said we want to, before we just lock in with, with one group, we're going to just kind of see what's out there. But the end of the day is the, going through and, and having professionals come in and help us and do a facilities audit for us. So, that way, can better help us plan and purpose for, for capital plans that will probably extend out five, maybe, maybe 10 years depending on what, what discoveries are. But the end of the day, rather than us just try to throw something together, bring professionals in to say, let's focus, we think your biggest needs here, leverage them, lean on them just a little bit, provide us some guidance and then that can help us as a board to, to understand and put together a facilities capital plan for, for the future. So, that is something that we do need to keep on our radar and appreciate you, y'all, working through that and, you know, be efficient at, in your, in your assessment and trying to find and to make a recommendation. Maybe we can, that could be something we get on our calendars early 2026, January, February timeframe. So, any other questions, comments regarding the district update? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, item number 11, comment on a bus issue. We were, we had revert, had a request to appear before the board regarding a bus issue by a parent, one of the children that was involved. And they are not in attendance tonight, so we won't be recognizing anybody to speak on that. Board members, you were aware of the mishap that took place and I will have to want to commend our director, Mr. Alley, for their approach on how they handled that. It was an unfortunate event, extremely poor, poor judgment, but as far as the policies and procedures that you, that are available and that we should carry out during those situations, they, they seem to be followed well and the appropriate discipline, disciplinary action was taken. So, it was unfortunate and I appreciate the fact, Mr. Alley, that you went in and did retraining on, on, on what took place with staff. It's, it's a good reminder and it's, hopefully, it'll be something that, that could be avoided in the past. Board members, just for your information, I think it's, as a safety precaution, before you, I guess, turn a bus off, you do have to come back, walk through the bus, activate a switch that you can only do by walking through the bus. And as you do that, you have an opportunity to check for anything that might be left behind. And that's a safety precaution that's on all of our buses and that's a way to prevent or recognize when, when something may have been left, either belonging or, or child in, in that case, and that's the reason why it's there. So, that system does work and it's a good safety precaution for us to have. So, so anyway, that, just a little information on, on that item, but since I have no one here to speak on that, we'll move next to item is public comment. We did have two individuals sign, sign up for a public comment, Representative Cheryl and Summer, Summer Phillips. Ms. Phillips has, I think, we, we covered her portion when we approved the, the school clubs. So, I think there, there's nothing for her to speak of. Representative Cheryl does want to speak on item under old business. So, Mr. Cheryl, if you don't mind, I'll wait until we get to that item on the agenda. We don't have many more things to cover and then we'll allow you to speak at the time we're, we're addressing that item. So, board members, if you're okay with that. Okay. All right, so that leads us to next item on our agenda and that's new business. You did find in your packet the request for White County High School Boys Soccer Team to travel request to Gatlinburg playing this tournament in March of next year, 12th through the 15th. So, that information for that field trip, field trip request was provided to you. Any questions on, on that, that request? And that request has been properly approved by the coach, the principal and the director. Okay, if no questions on that, then entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. McDonald. I have a second. Second by Ms. Officer. Discussion? Okay.
Why so early? I know you said it earlier, but just for the record.
So, the soccer coach that may or may not be related to me would like to take his team to Gatlinburg, but they have to pay the registration fees now because it's a very popular tournament. And so, the bookkeeper who may or may not be related to Mr. Smith has requested that we get approval now so that we have to get a purchase order. And that's the proper accounting, and she is correct, you need a proper accounting procedure. So, we need to pay that now and so, that's why it's so early. And in, in order, and it fills up so that he has asked at this time to the board to prove it so they can make that, that purchase and that purchase order.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Posed. Motion passes. Next item on our agenda is old business. Under old business, we have discussed, have had, had several meetings in the past about the request for, of the Bonnycruff Volunteer Fire Department regarding property that is located on our Bonnycruff School, that is part of our Bonnycruff School property. And we've had some discussion on that. We, as a board, we have approved a plat of what we would be willing to designate off for some type of transaction with the, with the, with the fire department. But also know that we, we discussed in the past how that, that there's a couple of things that we need to consider regarding a transaction, one of which is that it would have to be between the school system and a officially organized entity recognized by the state and the, and the feds having the proper, proper tax identification number. But Mr. Paul Cheryl has requested to, to speak to us tonight regarding this, this matter. And so, Ms. Cheryl, I'll recognize you this time. If you'd step to the podium and have a microphone for your convenience. And Ms. Cheryl, you will have five minutes on this as this falls into our public, public comment.
Is this on? Okay. Hey, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. It is an honor and a privilege to come and, and be a part and try to discuss what the needs is in our communities. And I appreciate the opportunity that I can say a few words for the, on behalf of Bonnycruff Fire Department as they've asked me to, if I would say a few words on their behalf. If I can, I'd like to give you a copy that they've given me of just, if it's okay, things that you think about our fire departments, what they do, okay, in our communities. I'm going to give you two. Okay. Thank you. So, I'm come tonight to talk to you on behalf of our, all of our volunteer fire departments because they are a necessary facility that we have in our county and across the state of Tennessee. When I was first elected in 2016, something was brought to my attention. What can we do to help our volunteer fire departments and our rescue squads? So, I was able to carry legislation to help our volunteer fire departments and rescue squads to get a license plate at no cost to them because, hey, these folks go out and work for you and I across the state of Tennessee to help us that our insurance is lower in here. And if we didn't have our volunteer fire departments, our insurance would be higher. Okay. You live in the city, you don't have to worry about that. I ain't trying to be rude about it or anything. You don't have to worry about it. But we have county people that lives in the county that if they didn't have a volunteer fire department, their insurance would be up higher than what it is now. So, as I've come tonight, just mainly talking on behalf of Bonnycruff Fire Department, but we do have some other fire departments that is sort of in the same situation where their fire departments is. So, my understanding, like you said, y'all have done, had a little bit of a meeting about this and already seemed to be that in favor of what we're trying to do, try to help them, and actually done, went ahead and, and surveyed the property of 1.3 acres, I believe is right. Is that correct? Vickers in Coval, I was told, had done the survey. And so, it sounds like something has happened since then. Since, and I don't know, I'm, I'm learning. I've come here asking. I've been told several different things. And when I was told this, of course, I called Ms. Terry Douglas and with a deep concern, as she knows, and me and her had a very lengthy conversation. And someone is saying that they don't want this property given to the Bonnycruff Fire Department. I can't understand what's going on. So, we'll just go further there because it's a valuable tool to the school that's right behind it. If you think of all the things that the volunteer fire department does in our community, which I have got a list, which I give you a list of things that they do. They have numerous hours of training that they have to go through. They have to go through the same training that a paid fireman. Now, these folks don't get paid. They go to wherever they have to go to get training at their expense, out of their pocket. They pay it out of their pocket because they want to be volunteer fire, firemen and try to take care of the community. You think about things like that. If you was a paid fireman, well, no big deal, you're going to get paid. These people don't get no pay. Very important, think about that, no pay. As they go do they. So, they take care of a lot of different things, structured fires, automobile fires, countywide fire assistance to other departments. They take care of the school, if the school needs something. And they even have folks at Bonnycruff Fire Department is trained just like a person with an ambulance service. If they can come, if you had a choking child in that school or a choking teacher or somebody, guess what? That volunteer fire department is within arm's reach to come in and help whoever's needing that. And hope we don't have that, but they're that close. Think about them things like that. So, there's just a lot of fire, fire equipment they have to take care of, medical emergencies, automobile wrecks, traffic control that they do for the county. They assist the rescue squad. They go down and hunt for people that's lost. Look at, look at Roy Whited, a good man that we've lost. I'm out of time.
You are. I'll, I'll give you the opportunity to finish your thought.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Anyway, you know, not only does the rescue squad do that, but our volunteer fire departments, they go out and help these people wherever it be. You think about, if you was in Scotts Guff and you fell and broke your leg, guess who's going to be there first? More than likely, they're the closest people that can be there to help you if you've done that. Eastland Fire Department, Bonnycruff Fire Department, okay? I know the other departments will be there as soon as they can, but they're close by. So, there's this, you know, they take care of the forestry. They, they support community events, fundraisers. I mean, there's just on and on and on that they do. They will even go to your house and put in a smoke alarm in your house. No cost to you. I've done seen it done. You think about things like that, that they do for the community. So, there's just a lot of things that we could ask for today, but I just want you to, to take this in consideration. I know that some may say, well, we don't want this property giveaway to the Bonnycruff Fire Department. So, let's just do it this way, if it worked with y'all. And we don't have to make no great decision tonight, but why can't we do it this way? Let Bonnycruff Fire Department buy this from the school for a dollar, say. And if it becomes theirs and then if some reason or another, Bonnycruff Fire Department goes away. They just don't exist no more. Automatically, put it in the deed, it would return back to the county, to the Bonnycruff School. I don't know what else to really say. I think you can make this work in a good way because it would be good for the community, be good for the school that's sitting there. And ever who don't want it, thinks it's a bad idea, I hope they don't need the fire department.
Thank you, Ms. Cheryl. Appreciate, appreciate that. So, board members, let's, let's circle back and revisit where we've been on this for clarity because I think we need to, I think we need to state a couple of things. One, unless a board member wants to, to speak to this, I'll speak on the behalf of what I, what I understand the board's position to be is that we're, we're for all of our volunteer fire departments and we appreciate what you do. And, and it's, it's just tremendous, tremendous service that you provide out of, with, with little to no gain. little to no gain from, from a personal standpoint. And that's something in our community that has been done for years. So we want to, I want to have the board, thank you for that and for our community, thank you for that. Board members, I think we, we also need to remember that the, the ask for us is just what do we, we have three volunteer fire departments that are occupying facilities on board, on property owned by the school boards. So we need to be aware of that. And what we need to do is we need to consider, how do we handle situations like that, the situation where three, three fire, volunteer fire departments have their facilities on, on school, on school property? I have done a little research, made some calls, appreciate Executive Robinson being here, here tonight and, and Mr. Markham to, to answer questions. But the, the property that, that we're discussing here tonight is, the board has discretion on that property. And that the, the county doesn't have as much discretion on the party, because the properties needed to the, the school system. So we need to, I think that's something that when I called, when we first had this discussion, that there may have been a little ambiguity on whether or not, how we process what, you know, who gets to make the final decision on that. It's, it's, want board know it's our final decision on the property that's, that's, that's indebted to the, the school system. So that's new information. I don't think that we have discussed about, discussed in, in any of our previous conversations about this, so I wanted you to be aware of that. We understand that the, the purpose why, the, why Bondicraw Fire Department has, has asked us to consider them having some more legal control over the property, legal control meaning ownership, but it doesn't have to be just ownership. And this is something, again, something else that we have not had discussion about. This is new information for, for you to, to consider, is that there would have to be some type of transaction to give them the ability to, to have, have, have flexibility in how, in what they could do as far as the way they would go about and try to get funding for whatever improvements they wanted to do. And there, we need to consider that because while an outright purchase may be an option, a lease may be a better option. Because if, 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 if the school were to sell property, then that may be, trigger other things about how we dispose of surplus, surplus assets. And so those are things that the board, this board would have to consider in how, the best way to put a transaction together. But I do think we've been clear to Chief Smith and, and for the fire department that we can't really do anything until the, the fire department has, has the proper EIN and, and numbers and for the...
We have that.
Y'all have that? Okay, great. That's good.
We've had those, sir, since 1984.
Okay.
We're just waiting on them to be switched over, the federal part of it, to be switched from a nonprofit to a 501(c)(3).
Okay.
We're 100% nonprofit right now.
Okay.
Through federal and state.
All right. So have you, have you submitted that information to, you're going to leave that with us tonight?
He's not.
Okay, great. That, we probably, we need to see that so that way we just understand where that's at. So yeah, if you leave that and give us a chance to look that over and because it, if you're...
Can we make copies of that?
Sure, we can get you copies of that. That won't be a problem because that's one of the questions we talked about and we've talked about that after some of our meetings. So understand that would be, will be good to know and understand your, from your, your legal, legal status. But I, I think from the standpoint, board members, that we need to, we need to set this as an agenda item for our, our next meeting to discuss how we would want to proceed. But what I'm going to recommend is that we do this, we need to consider doing it for all those that have facilities on our property. And so we can, we're not prepared to, to have, at least I'm not prepared unless, unless board members you convince me otherwise or you have different opinions on it. I think that, I think we need to gather some information and be prepared to have proper deliberation discussion about that in a, in a board meeting where we'd be in better position to, to take action and, and make a, make a decision if we're going to do that. So that's my recommendation. Anybody else have any comments on that?
Chairman, may I add something to this?
Yes, sir.
They did have the federal number. It's on this paper. The, what happened was the man that was taking care of the treasurer that was taking care of this passed away.
Understand.
So it overlapped. So that's why it's, now they got to reapply for the number because he deceased and he didn't keep it up, which he died. And then, and then now trying to get it through the federal government now, as you know, the federal government's shut down. So they're having problems in getting it back up and going. So, thank you.
Okay. Well, appreciate that, appreciate that update, but I think, board members, we, we need to be prepared to start making the decision of what, what we do. We've, it's one thing to have the, the parcel, but I think this is a little bit bigger than just for Bondicraw and we need to consider other, the other departments in our, in our county as well.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Besides volunteer fire departments, are there other entities that occupy school-owned property in a similar situation? Because you'd mentioned about looking at the other two, bringing them, but are there other entities besides that, that own, that occupy property in a similar manner?
We leased some daycare space out of this facility. And I don't...
Would the convenience center at Castle be on our property?
The convenience center is not. The fire department is at Castle, at Central View and at Bondicraw. Those are the, I think those are the only properties I can think of that, that have, that are in a similar situation.
That's a very good and relevant question, Mr. Smith. Any other questions, comments?
I will say that there, there is statute about county, you can't have for-profit businesses on, on our school board property, but there is an exception, a caveat for daycare for that very purpose because there are so many daycare deserts as they're called. And so there's a caveat for that, so that's how that's permissible. But, so it would have to be a separate entity, wouldn't be something we would do for-profit on school property.
Okay. Board members, any other questions or comments? Okay, so just, so we're all clear and we'll know heading into next month. We're going to try to get information gathered. We know that you have, you have an EIN number. So that's good. We'll get a copy of that. We'll probably end up getting with Mr. Markham and whoever else we need to involve to see, okay, some options of what we could do and what we might be willing to do regarding the, the facilities that are on, on our property from, from the, specifically the volunteer fire departments. And then hopefully we can make a decision that would clean up, clean up all this, these maybe loose ends. So any other questions, comments on that? All right, then we'll, thank you, Mr. Cheryl. We'll move on to the next item on agenda and that's chairman's comments. Our next, next school board meeting will be December 11th here at the, at the White County Board of Education. We'll be spotlighting Castle during that night. We'll have our work session at 5:00 and a regular board meeting at 6:00. TSBA conference, which the board will be attending, will be next week, November 13th through the 16th in Nashville, Tennessee at the Opryland Hotel. And we will be recognizing Mr. McDonald as he concludes his year of service to the TSBA as president. And we do appreciate you representing the White County and serve, and your willingness to serve in that role. It's, 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 just appreciate you, you doing that and it reflects well on our, our district.
Can I make one, one comment right there?
Yes, sir.
I, I do want to say thank you to this board and, and all the supervisors and, and the staff here, all the schools, everybody for allowing me that opportunity to be able to serve on that board. Opening experience to get to see what goes on across our state and other, other districts. We, we have issues and problems of our own, but I'm just going to go ahead and tell you, we don't have the problems that some of those larger districts have. And, and I'm very grateful for the opportunity to be able to learn what happens outside of White County.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald, and I'm just thankful for somebody to be a champion for White County to, to the state. We've got a lot of good things going on here in, in White County and education's one of them. And we need to not be shy about letting others know how well we're doing. So that reflects to the leadership of, of our administrators, the diligence of our, our teachers, our aides and the commitment for our support staff all to make that happen. And we've got some really great test scores show the, the results for our students and the education that they're receiving. So that's great news. Part of that TSBA conference, the, the board will be meeting Saturday morning at 8:15 in the convention hall. And we're going to be trying to wrap up our efforts that we've been taking this fall for strategic planning to have some discussion on that at our next board meeting and to reveal some, some action items that we'd like to take and consider that in, in proper order. So that will be taking place on, on Saturday morning, the 16th. Other than that, any other questions or comments?
It's almost halftime. Warriors are up 13-7.
That's great. Go Warriors and appreciate the success they're having and all the hard work going on there. So bringing us to the next item on the agenda and that's adjournment, that's motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. McDonald. Have a second. Second by Mr. Young.
Second.
I second. All those in favors?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Everyone have a good evening. Thank you.
Need a comment? Yeah, I was going to ask, Ms.